This is school committee meeting to order at 6:09 on Monday the 12th. We're supposed to do a roll call, members here. Bob Halla.
Yes.
Maureen Nichols.
Yes.
Katie Edwards. This meeting is being recorded, so everybody should know that. So I'm the chair and I'm presiding over our public hearing today. Once the hearing has commenced, there's no motions or votes until the hearing has officially concluded. The purpose of the hearing is to invite comments from the members of the public regarding to the FY19 proposed budget, which we have copies of right here for people who are interested. The committee would welcome comments from anybody, but there's nobody here to comment, so... Well, it's always here to comment, but it's not here to comment. So we will take a motion to open the meeting and then a motion to close the meeting.
Make a motion to open the meeting at 6:11.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I think we should just give a brief overview.
So good evening. We are presenting a fiscal year 19 budget in the amount of $1,681,259 town appropriating dollars. This is an increase from this year, the year 2017-18, of $41,003 or a 2.5 percent increase. This amount reflects the amount required from town appropriation. An additional $44,951 will be fueled, funded by other grant revolving account sources. This brings the total operating budget of the Whately Elementary School to $2,126,210 in the fiscal year of 2019.
So unless there's any other questions or comments?
From the public?
From the public.
Thank you for coming.
Make a closing.
Making a close to the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that closes our hearing at 6:12. So we'll now open the call to order the school committee meeting, Whately.
6:11.
March 12th, school committee meeting at 6:13. The first order of business is to review and approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from May, excuse me, February 5th.
All in favor? Aye. Any comments or... Next up, the financial statement and warrants.
Oh, for someone, I'll apologize, because I thought I sent this out Friday and then Sunday. I'm like, did I ever email that? And then when I went to look for it in my... We just switched over to the new computer, so it... I don't know where... I know I saved it, but I don't know where it went. So then I had to come in first thing this morning, so I apologize that you didn't get it earlier. And I will make sure that that doesn't happen again in the future. But quickly glancing through it, I did... There was nothing that stood out glaringly to me that's changed since the last time I gave you our update. And you do have warrants tonight to sign. There are six of them totaling $45,657.38.
Can I ask a question about the financial thing? About the financial, not financial, but yeah.
Oh, let's say I ran this wrong.
Yeah, I think there's a problem.
There is a problem with it.
It looks like the encumbrances are totally...
This is what happened. Okay, so, and if I had my yellow folder, I did run it. And then I ran it this morning not thinking. Okay, so every month I manually calculate the encumbered payroll. One of them, I accidentally put the wrong date in when I closed the purchase order. So now I'm supposed to run the report from the February date all the way through to June 30th, or that other mistaken date doesn't get corrected. So I will send you a new report in the morning. I can actually run it right now. I have to run it from 2:01 to 6:30, and then it will be corrected. Because I just looked at myself and I'm like, why are all these negatives? And it says that we're six feet from one.
Way over, I was a little nervous.
I'm looking at the second one here, super tense.
The bottom line, I'm like, ah!
And I was just like, looking really quick and I was like, okay. So no, I will send you a new one and email it to you right now.
So it has to do with the encumbrances of the salaries?
There was an error closing one month, and so I need to do that. And this will be a good check to see if I can get in under the new...
We'll put a big X on it.
Just throw them away, I apologize.
Recycle.
Yes.
Okay, so Patty will send out. Patty will send a new one in then we'll...
I'm gonna do it right now.
And you print it here, or you'll just send it to their email?
Do you access printers?
I don't know.
I don't think it's gonna pop up on your screen. I think which printers pop up is really going to be specific.
You'd have to send it to Patty.
You can email it to me and then I can print it.
Oh, okay, we can do that. Okay, well, why don't we...
I mean, unless there's...
I'd rather give you...
Unless there's something drastically that we need to know about, it can probably wait until next month instead of printing a lot of paper.
That's true.
I mean, that's my suggestion.
Well, okay, so why don't we do this? I will reprint it, I will look at it, and if I see anything, I will send out a new copy. If I see nothing glaring out at us, I will hold it off till March. April, because this is March.
Yeah.
This is March, right?
But I get...
Well, you can send a copy. We don't really need to discuss it tonight unless there's an issue.
Okay, I apologize.
We can look at it on our, you know, on our email.
I would sort of...
Yeah, I think it's good to have a copy. Okay. So we'll move on to public comments. Anybody have a comment? I don't think so.
No one likes us.
Well, come visit, we like having public comments. So we'll move on to the unfinished business.
Is that telephone?
No, I think it's telephone. Okay, so we're on to the budget, the proposed budget, which is the topic of... The main topic of the unfinished business. There's been no changes as far as...
No, so what you would... So yes, you would need someone to make a motion to adopt the fiscal 19 budget in the amount of $1,681,259, an increase of 2.5 percent as presented in the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, yeah, all in favor?
Any other discussion? Before we vote on it?
I mean, I think it's all laid out pretty well. I think the meeting went fairly well. I haven't heard any other feedback to date, but I think it all is supportive. Some good arguments, and will hopefully help the school continue to improve.
All in favor?
Okay. All in favor?
Good job.
So, we have a budget for next year.
Well, we gotta get through town meeting. We gotta get through town meeting, have a proposed budget.
We'll be fine at town meeting. We will be.
It's easy to support what we're asking for at this point. It's not easy, but we can. I like the idea of the, just FYI, the budget for the cafeteria going forward. I think that will be really helpful. So that's sort of separate from this, but...
Along with the Deerfield School Committee meeting, Mary and I, our meeting to get all our financials to do our big presentation for the April meeting, keeps getting... Like, Mary won't be in tomorrow because she doesn't work on snow days. So we were supposed to be doing the three little elementaries tomorrow, and then Thursday we were gonna focus on Deerfield and Frontier. So once again, our meeting got canceled. So we are proposing... So we will be doing a presentation in totality at the April 5th meeting about everything that moving in the right direction. And then when we break down, we will have separate reports for each of the schools as to where we are. And even though our general ledger budget is funding the salaries, when we look at the profit and loss that we're gonna be showing you, we look at that as income, because we still have to report it to DESI as if it's a self-sufficient fund. So it'll look like we are getting funds from the general ledger, and so it'll look like that.
To cover the salaries.
Correct. And then right after we finish getting that done, Mary and I are gonna start working on our budgets for FY19.
Twenty, well, I saw you say twenty is...
Well, we're in 18 now, so we wanna have budgets for 19. Even though we didn't present them during the season, we're going to start our first look at what do we think our budget should look like.
Maybe different than this budget?
We're gonna make them a part of that.
So it's gonna be like the school choice budget or the early education budget?
It'll have its own column, so that we're saying if you're only...
If you need to.
Right, if you're only gonna serve this many lunches and bringing in this money, much revenue, and your labor has to be this many service hours, then your food costs are gonna be limited to this, so that we break even and we budget to break, to come out to zero. Will it happen? I don't know, but I think we need to set goals for them to follow and to track. And then we'll know where... We'll know a lot sooner when we're going off track when, if they have a budget set for them.
Or we might need to budget to cover some shortfall every year, because that seems to be the pattern already.
Well, and again, and we talked about this, our two main goals this year was to lessen the loss and increase our collections from parents. Those were our goals. I don't think that we will ever see Whately or Conway make a profit or even break even, because our numbers say we should only have one person. But one person can't serve.
No.
So we're always gonna have that extra.
So we have to factor that into our budgets, that we're always gonna need to supplement potentially.
Exactly. Do we need to supplement the whole...
If we did, that would be a miracle.
Do we... But can we get our sales up so that we don't have to supplement both salaries? Maybe we can only... We could get to a point where we're only doing the part-time salary. And that would free up our money for computers or something else.
But this will show that much more clearly.
Exactly.
Thank you for doing that.
And I can't wait for you guys to meet Mary DeLusa, because she is just a bundle... She is, I call her Tigger. She is just so optimistic, and she's got lots of ideas, and she's so excited to be working with all the schools. And she's an amazing young woman, and I can't wait for you guys to meet her.
She has a very nice way about her. The employees are thrilled, the other principals are thrilled.
We meet every couple of weeks on a Monday, which is something that never happened before, you know, so we're really in good communication about all the details. It's been great.
I get a lot of emails from her, which is it. Okay, so we'll move on to new business. I'm not sure who's gonna take us through the policy discussion. Is that Lynn, or is that...
We can.
There's like...
Amendment to following policies.
May I look at that for a minute?
Sure, yeah.
So these policies, we actually in the... Actually, I'll let you do it, you're on the policy committee. We worked on those, and we just...
You're previewing them essentially for any comments that people might have.
If you see updated language, it's just basically, if you printed them, I have them all here, but on some of them, it's just...
You should be able to see the strikeouts and the writing in red. So the writing in red is what we've added, the strikeouts are what we've taken out.
So some of them are very simple, some of them are a little bit more, but it took us... Unfortunately, when we started doing the policies, next thing you know, MASC is trying to put some more on us before we have what we have done.
Right, because you just did them, like, a year ago, right?
In 2016.
Yeah, we did.
But there's about 100 that need to be updated. And then there's other things that we need to look at from a district perspective, from all schools. IT acceptable use policy being one. There's another couple of ones, well, she says 11 from the health. And so we're talking about different things like that, as well as what MASC wants us to do. So I think it's... It'll be a continual subcommittee, but right now, we're meeting very intensely, like, at least once every two weeks to get a handful done. But they have to have a first read for you folks. You have to read them now. We have to present them in public meeting to you, and then, so that you would be knowledgeable enough to vote on them. And so what we said at the other meetings, if you have a question about them, you can send it to all of us, we may not be able to deliberate and answer.
Who's all of us, this committee?
This committee, yeah.
Yep.
We may not be able to certainly deliberate, because it would be open meeting. However, that would be a question to present, and then when we vote on them in our small committees in April, those questions can come up. Or we might bring the questions from everybody and present it at the joint meeting. And then when you go back, so the discussion would be with all 24 members. And then when you go back, you vote on them in your own committee.
So just remind me, the policies are for every school, they're consistent. That was one of the...
K-12.
Things that my predecessor did, right? So now, but each school has to approve them separately.
That's what we found out at the last joint meeting when we talked about the food service director.
And there's a subcommittee, Bob is our representative on that subcommittee.
Yeah, we showed up the other night, me and Mary Ray, and we needed, there was three more, and we needed three for a quorum, and no one showed up, so...
Oh, no.
Yeah, we sat there for half an hour waiting for somebody else hopefully to show up. So that hurt us by, you know, an hour and a half that we usually get. We get quite a bit done in an hour and a half, so... But you could tell there's four new policies here, things that MASC is recommending for new policies. We went through them, there's some language on some, update language you read through. And it'll tell you, when you look at them, if you look at them online, they're highlighted in red. So you can look at them on your computer if you want. I printed them, I could tell, so I take a yellow marker and I just highlighted my...
I mean, the updates are red.
Yeah, they'll cross out something, and then the updates will be in red.
My printer printed colors, so...
Oh, yours is colored, yeah, so you can see everything new in red. And then we had amendments to existing policies for personnel policies and procedures. We wanted to... Something that's been wanting to be done for probably three or four years, I would say, is longevity for non-union personnel. Right now, we have steps for non-union personnel up to 20 years. So what it is, is basically they reach different increments, they get a stipend for his longevity, like you would get for union personnel up until a certain amount. So we have a lot, I'm not gonna say a lot, there's a few people in our district. So we added a 25, a 30, and a 40-year stipend for people who've been here 25, 30, or 40 years. And it basically falls on the $250, if I remember right, the $250 mark on those three segments. And it's been needed for a long time.
So that's new.
That's something we change in longevity. There's other things in the personnel, non-union personnel folder that we would like to try to do, but Dr. Carey, and I think the committee suggested that we have another subcommittee, maybe in the fall, that we can go over all the other procedures, like vacation time and stuff, and try to get it on the same line as everybody else that deserves, you know, has vacation time and sick time and buyback and all that.
And may I make a suggestion as someone who may be needing to replace a person soon? We need to make that competitive. If we want to be able to attract people to our district, I'm gonna be having someone retire here probably since after 30 years. I wanna bring someone inexperienced. If I can only offer them one week vacation, they're gonna say, bye-bye. Because I've got three weeks, I've got three weeks where I am. Why would I come here for one week? It has to be competitive.
But my question with that was, one of those, one of my questions, the school vacation weeks, do those people get that?
No, we work 260 days of the year. And we... Some people like to take the school vacation off, but if that's a payroll week, we can't.
We non-union people.
The non-union people cannot.
Unless you're specifically a, like, nine-month employee or something.
We've only got 12, we have four 12 months in my department. I have four 12 months, 260 days, and their vacations are around their deadlines. And until I got here and learned how to be the backup payroll, then they always had to do it on payroll, which I don't think that is fair. I just don't think that that's fair, that you're always locked in. And one woman wanted to take a two-week vacation. So for the first time in many, many years, she was able this year to take a two-week vacation, because I know how to back her up in payroll now. So she took a two-week vacation and loved it, and I did the payroll. Which is good to have someone else look, do the payroll, because it gives me a bird's-eye view. You know, does everything look good, does everything look kosher? It's sort of like, you know, bank employees are required to take two weeks off, because that would be the given time that if they were something monkey business going on. So I think it's a good process, but if we give benefits to the point where we're not marketable and no one wants to come to work for us, that's gonna be problematic for the non-union positions.
So that's still a to-do, though?
Yeah, that's a to-do that we're talking about, yes.
It would be, you know, that would be a time... It would have a timeline that wouldn't be wide open, like, say, the policy. You know, once we finish with the work that we've set out for ourselves this year, then the policy committee would might meet every three, four months just to check in on things. But that one would be done before budget season next year.
Because that has budgetary impact, potentially.
It may, yes.
And this one has budgetary impact.
Yep, yep.
Not large.
Not large.
But it's just like anybody else, if somebody decides to retire here or a Frontier, they have money coming to them, so in the line item for longevity, some years we take, if you look at, sometimes you'll see, oh, we took out $17,500 out of Frontier, but next year, somebody's gonna retire, they're gonna need three of them, so we're gonna have to add in 17,500 times three as longevity. So it's just like, this longevity, which is very minute, we would have to have a line item for longevity for whatever school it would be in, correct?
And the thing I wanna talk about longevity, this isn't new... This isn't a new problem with Dr. Carey being here. This was a problem when Regina was here, this was a problem when Marty was here. And when Marty was here, I helped her, I tried to help her. The secretaries, the non-union secretaries keep telling us, we need raises. They get the raises, but I've been here 40 years. And we tried to explain to them that you can be here 40 years, but a position is only worth so much money. So, and unfortunately, they took that to mean that we didn't feel that they were worth the money. Where my point was, you can be here 40 years, it doesn't mean you're gonna make the same amount of money as a principal. And what you really should be rewarded for is longevity. That's what you're asking. You're asking to be rewarded for being a 40-year employee. Because what happens is, if we adjust the rates of the secretaries at the high school, then the central office wants, sees that, and they want their rates adjusted, and it just makes this whole trickle-up or trickle-down effect. Where, so if we make this a longevity issue, then everybody gets the same benefit when they achieve that longevity.
That makes sense.
And saves us headaches of trying to say, you know, well, this one got a raise because of this, and this one got a raise because of that.
Well, it sounds like it's a good plan.
Unfortunately, the non-union people are a group that are by themselves, where everybody else is unionized now. So at one time, not everybody was unionized. So there was more non-union people than probably union people, if you count all the IAs or, you know, that are unionized now, so...
The non-union procedure and policy manual also has different classifications. So the library assistant is different than the custodian, which is different than the bookkeeper.
And that's just the Frontier.
Different than the secretary.
So Frontier has that, Deerfield has that, but Sunderland and Whately don't.
So we just need to see if they're...
It's work to be done to standardize.
Yeah, clean it up and make sure it's uniform, I mean, that's...
And I mean, if we're... And it would be really helpful, like, if our goal is to try to be moving in the direction of being the most efficient, even though we're a union and not yet a regional, it would help us if we all had the same salary schedule, so that if we did need to move a custodian...
I agree, I think that we should be able to move staff around more easily across the school.
And we can't, because, like I said, Sunderland and Whately don't have salary schedules, but Deerfield and Frontier do. And Conway doesn't either. So it's like, if we go to move somebody, they have to change total employers, which I understand right now. But if it was the same salary schedule, if we could adopt the same salary schedule for the same jobs, it would at least make that piece a little bit easier. So that, you know, if we move somebody, they don't get a raise just because they went to the school, because you might not be getting moved because you're doing great. But yet, that one has a salary schedule that says you get a raise.
Right, I see. Okay. So did you have any questions?
Questions on them?
Were we gonna go through them all, or no? I don't think...
We don't... We could, but if you read them and have your questions, we can actually ask those questions at the joint meeting, so that everybody can share in that discussion. Unless you'd like to read them all.
If you've got something that's simple and you wanna ask questions, I see you've got little notes, you can ask.
Some of it's just that, because I don't understand. I wonder if I should ask these, like, outside the meeting, not to waste people's time in the meeting.
Like, maybe make a one-on-one point with Dr. Carey?
If it's clarification, yeah, if it's clarification, I can help, you know, I can certainly answer that. Just deliberation on whether or not you think it should change, but I can certainly clarify anything.
Like, if there's things that you're questioning in terms of...
But you know what, Dr. Carey, that's not a bad idea. If you tell all the school committee members to submit questions, and then you could develop a frequently asked question about the policies to present in April without deliberating.
Right, so that we all hear the same answers.
So, this is not questioning the policy, I just had some... There's the new policy on the bus driver examination and training. And these things that says we're supposed to have on record, do we already have them? And this is just creating a policy, we have criminal offender record and their driving record.
And their fingerprinted.
Yeah.
And their medical, they get signed off by a physician as well.
Okay.
Yeah, Lenny, Lenny, our bus driver, has all of this.
Does he keep the information, or do we keep it?
He does.
He keeps the medical, we get the fingerprints, we get the background, yes.
But we would rather not have their medicals. We just need a letter that everyone's medical has been performed.
Right.
But we do get the Corrie and fingerprint check every year.
Who pays for that?
They, who pays for the Corries?
For fingerprinting.
The employee that has to.
Okay.
But it is tax deductible for all.
It is, huh? Wow.
I'll just ask a couple of things. The meal charge policy, that's new. I have a question, it's with the wording. It says in the second paragraph, "The school committee will provide a regular meal to students who forget or lose their lunch money." Should it say school committee? Because, or is that just, because the school committee isn't making the meals?
It's your policy, though, that we will feed children regardless if they have money or not.
We'll pay the budget to cover the meal, basically.
It just sounded strange.
The language.
Yeah, the language, and...
You're authorizing us to feed the children.
Well, I understand that's what it means, I was just, the wording seemed kind of strange. And then the student handbook, like, do we have a student handbook? And is it with all that stuff we get at the beginning of the school year?
It's online, it's on our website. We don't speak it on paper.
Okay. Well, I know we get all those things at the beginning of the year that...
I think it is part of the beginning.
Is it in the package sometimes, yeah, and maybe?
Yeah, I mean, it could have been...
It's definitely on our website.
And I know it's a long way off, Maureen, but when the kids get to Frontier, we actually give them a planner, and the handbook is right in the planner.
I didn't know if that was just a Frontier thing, but... In this one, the Union 38 School District Personnel Policy.
That's what we're talking about.
Yes. In the table, and this is just a picky little thing. Table of contents, the last thing that says summary of employee benefits. Everywhere that that's referenced in here, and at the end where that section is, it's called description of benefits, it's just a picky little thing.
Okay, instead of summary?
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's certainly something our school committee...
We used to do that kind of stuff in my... We used to do that kind of stuff in my.
No. You know, consistency, and that's why having all the different eyes on it. But that's definitely something that that subcommittee could do. This is a document that has been, it's probably old as the hills, but I do think it was updated somewhere around eleven, twelve. If you look on the back page perhaps, nope.
Yep.
December first.
Fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen.
Yeah.
That's when it was adopted.
So, and these changes weren't really, you know, they modified it or they, you know, they resubmitted it the same way we're doing it now too. We're updating it for two thousand eighteen. But these documents are living documents. They need to be looked at and reassessed on a regular basis.
I have a question about, these pertain to the non-union staff or all staff?
Non-union.
Just non-union. So are there any non-union staff on the committee? Are they involved in reviewing these policies and/or?
No, it's just your school.
Providing input, so it's just the school committee?
Yeah. If there's a subcommittee, may or may not be a, because this isn't a negotiation because it's not collective bargaining. But there may or may not be somebody representing that group.
Right.
In the subcommittee. But it's a little bit different than a union negotiation.
Where I work, they would have representatives of the people who policies pertain to as a voice and as a way to kind of verify that this makes sense, even though they don't necessarily have a vote on what the policy is, but as a way to get buy-in. So I don't know if we have an opportunity to have them review them to make sure there aren't any good hearings or anything. I'm not saying there are, but it's just a good practice.
Definitely, the collaboration is important.
Right.
So that people, you know, just validated to for the work.
Right, and to let them know that, I don't know if they know, that these are being done, this work is being done, so they can appreciate that too. Sounds like it's going to improve things for some of them. Yeah, I think overall, the changes in the wording for the existing policies was clearer. It was more direct, you know, didn't need all the extra.
The Massachusetts Association of School Committees recommended these due to changes in the law. As you know, every year, they pass this bill, that bill. The laws change, the requirements change, the expectations change. So to make sure that we're right on the edge so that if there were any kind of problem or any kind of litigation or whatever, we are following the most up-to-date policy and the most up-to-date laws. So it is important work, so, yeah.
So I have a stupid question. At-will employee, does that mean non-union?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so are we done with policies? So next, well, the plan is to vote on those at the next meeting, the joint meeting.
Yeah.
And are the individual?
Right.
Will they vote on individually?
We can discuss them together in general. Everybody, like, you know, so like, what, if Maureen's got questions, somebody from Conway may have the same question. And then, but then, so we can discuss at the joint meeting, but just like we did with the, as Dr. Carey was saying, with the food service director, we'll take the actual vote in the individual meeting.
So we'll have a reading in the full committee. So we'll say this one, and we're changing it with these words. And then, does anyone have any questions? Is that clear? Okay, and then we'll do the other one. And I'm sure people will have questions. We can't get through, you know, even when we're sitting at the table, we go through.
She was saying it was going to be a long meeting, I said bring cookies.
Well, we can bring up each one and say, do they have any questions about it? If they have questions, then we should probably read it. If no one's got questions about GB or whatever the policy is, then we could probably.
So the idea of the subcommittee is we go through it, we spend the time, and we, you know, do the focus and the due diligence. After every meeting, I have homework, that I have to find out some information and bring it back to the committee to say, this is what I learned. So that we are recommending to the committee that they vote for it and, you know, with that sense that the due diligence pretty much has been done by the subcommittee. So hopefully, it might go more quickly than it does in the subcommittee.
If people show up.
Right.
Okay, so I think we're done with the policy discussion. Review of early childhood tuition rates?
We sent those to you.
You sent them to me.
Did we share them with everybody?
Well, I can talk about them, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This came, I think, before the last meeting.
Or at the end, after the last meeting.
Right. So our daily rate for the eight-thirty to three portion is thirty-eight fifty a day. And then for them to stay the extended day, three to five-thirty, is fifteen dollars, an extra fifteen dollars a day. And then the sliding scale works depending on the number of people in your family and your income. And that's why you'll see, like, when it's, if it's a family of three, so two parents and one child, they have to make less than forty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars a year in total in order to get the sliding scale rate.
The sliding scale, it's the same though for each.
It's fifty percent, it's the same. Because it's fifty percent of the tuition, and the tuition is thirty-eight fifty a day plus fifteen for extended day. So they get a fifty percent discount.
I just assumed it was like, you know, pro-rata or whatever, depending on which category.
No, it's, and this is from the ECC, right. This is from the ECC website.
So that's not really a sliding scale, that's.
Yeah.
Discounted rates.
Well, they call it a sliding scale, that's what they call it.
This is sliding, I guess, when you qualify. Okay, and this is the first year they had it all standardized with the other good staff.
Yes, it's the same in all four elementary schools are paying the same amounts.
Was that different before?
Each school had their own.
Well, some of them didn't have extended day or.
Didn't have extended day.
Does all have extended days now?
Some of the half-days weren't even the same amount of time.
Exactly.
So, and remember, special education students come free because we, as a district, we are obligated to provide.
For a full day, they come free?
It depends. It depends on their IEP. If their IEP says ten hours per week, they get ten free hours. If they stay after those ten hours, then they have to pay.
And that's what, two years, nine months?
Yes. To the age of twenty-two.
It's still very reasonable prices, I think, for other preschoolers. It's good for people to know. They're not publicized, so people don't know necessarily. I think you have to ask for the rates, right?
Yes, and Rhonda sends, then we'll send you a full package of information. We have waiting lists, Katie, so people know.
We don't need another more people.
We don't need to spending money on advertising because people know we're here and they know we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, we lived in Boston.
Yeah. They should all be moving out here.
Free school would be crazy.
I mean, it's to the point, I mean, I see, I do some people's taxes, and it's like, they can't wait to get to kindergarten because they spend so much money.
Yeah.
That, you know, getting them to a public school kindergarten saves them so much money for childcare.
All the summer rolls.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we'll move on then, no votes are needed. We'll move on to the new standing report, the capital projects, which Pete has offered to.
Sounds good. I'll give you a second to find the one I put in front of you. And we'll do that, and if you want, you can roll right into the principals report after that. So what you'll notice first of all in your package is that you have, let's do number two first because you have an addendum here. So why don't you take a look at the addendum on your packet? Because that'll give you an idea of where some of this information is coming from. So when it comes to the sprinkler system update, certainly there's still a lot of information to be gathered. But I'll walk you through what I have here. I consulted with Brian Domina because he got the report, came to him from this latest company who is called Industrial Technical Services. And what they did is they put a scope into our system, okay? So they ran a camera through all the pipes that they could possibly look at. And they completed that inspection. And what you're holding is the preliminary report. And it's just checkboxes, as you can see, it's not a narrative. But if you look at it and you read some of the narrative, for example, right on page one, it says, "While there was some sediment found along with a few areas that should be flushed, it does not look as though all piping would need to be replaced. We suggest changing out several of the pitted pipes and flushing the called-out areas along with changing out about a dozen of the couplings for the newer tri-seal couplings that will not protrude into the flow of water causing some of the pooling showed in the video." So they give you some sense of what they saw in this scope project that they did. So it's a preliminary report that's being shared with you tonight. The next step is going to be for ITS to give us a more clear sense of the scope of work based on their recommendations of what needs to be completed. And as I said, they are recommending that the system, at the very least, need to be flushed with some limited replacement of pipes, gaskets, and seals. But it appears at this point that an entire replacement of the system is not necessary. Although, again, you know, I want to just caution that that could change, certainly. And we still need to have all of the sprinkler heads replaced because our sprinkler heads failed and they've just outdated and they need to be replaced. And then, of course, the work still needs to be done to identify who the contractor would be for that, you know, and get cost proposals, and then proceed. And we need, the committee that's been working on this needs to act fairly quickly because obviously we want that warrant on the annual town meeting when the time comes around. So, and Brian, Brian and I agreed that it probably didn't make a lot of sense for him to come tonight, but certainly he's offered his time to come to your next meeting or to meet with the school committee at some point, you know, for more of an update.
Well, you know, what I find interesting here at the one meeting that I went to is that they were, the main concern is that they were seeing so much sludge in these pipes. And yet, alternative, they've got no significant foreign material observed, no. No tubercules or slime observed, no. No significant foreign material observed, no.
I think those are double negative questions, Patty, that's why. In other words, if it says.
So that means there is?
If it says no foreign material, right.
It should be a yes. You want it to be a yes. Okay.
That's confusing.
No tuberculosis or slime observed. If it said yes, then you would not have seen it. I think the fact that it says no means that there is.
That's a stupid way to do it.
I mean, ours, we have a system, I guess, something like this. And once in a while, when the people come who check on it, they flush the system and it's outside. That's where the pipe is outside for the overflow. And it just, a lot of water comes out of it. And then they bring, the compressor comes back on to push everything out. And then all your low places, we take a bucket, we check out, I mean. We have a similar system here, Bob, with the low-point discharge. But this system has never been like super flushed. And they're suggesting that that's a place to start. And then we've also heard from some of the companies or their engineers that once that's done and certain pipes, you know, that are already corroded have been removed, that then there's some sort of, I want to say it's nitrogen, although I could be wrong, that there's a nitrogen injection or something that, because these are, it's a dry system, so there's no water flowing through those sprinkler pipes on a regular basis. So they fill the pipes with nitrogen, which further inhibits corrosion. And that's something we've never done before either. So that might be all part of the process. But anyway, that's where we're at with that particular.
So that's good news, it sounds like.
Sounds like good news. It can be expensive one way or another, I'm sure. But it sounds like good news. It's not, they're not saying, yeah, this system is, you know, you probably just have to tear it down and start over.
Now, they won't fix it, they just do the report.
ITS, I don't know if they are also, you know, this particular company. I think that Brian tried to be careful to hire, you know, maybe a company that had no vested interest.
Yeah.
But I can't say that for certain. But either way, it's probably going to be enough expense where it's going to go out to bid. So folks will have, folks, you know, will be getting proposals from more than one company.
And who does that? Is Brian going to do the bidding?
Brian's been, yeah, I don't, again, I can't speak for him, but I know that Bob, probably he and Bob together will discuss, you know, who the companies are that they want to invite to bid, others who may bid. I suppose the two of them, I might say, are taking the lead on this. So that's one of the capital projects. The other is the phone system. And again, I consulted with Scott Paul, our IT director, because he is very much in charge of that project. And here's the notes. I'll just read through them and see if I can't annotate them a little bit further. So all end-user phone equipment is on order and being shipped. That's the end result of us having looked at, I think, three different types of telephones that, you know, Mary also looked at from our main office and, you know, tried. And they had them, I mean, these guys do a great job. They had it all set up at central office, plugs, you know, phones plugged in and actually working, so to speak, so that we could test different parts of the system and see if we liked them, how well it worked. And so that part's been done, and phone equipment is on order and being shipped now. We've made a decision. Crocker was selected as the telephony service provider following successful testing that we did with Crocker back in February. And the final voice-over internet protocol circuit that will connect Whately to Crocker, and that's for external calling capabilities, is expected to be installed by March sixteenth. That's this Friday, for those of us who can't believe how fast time has gone by. The network cabling for the phone devices was installed. We had a gentleman in here, Bruce Weston, for a couple of weeks who ran wires throughout the whole building. And if you're looking, probably behind me too, but in every classroom now, there are lines leading into every classroom where these phones are going to go. So that's a big step that's been already accomplished. Let's see here, the initial network setup. So the private bank exchange configuration and firewall configurations, that's still underway, but also expected to be completed by the end of this week. And that's work that's happening in-house. I think I've mentioned to this committee before that the IT staff is taking on a lot of this work because it's more cost-effective. And once that private bank exchange is configured to meet the school requirements and tested, then they'll schedule the cutover of our system and our phone numbers to the new service and the new private bank exchange. The exact date is to be determined, but we're looking at mid-April as an estimate. Hey, we got our own bank now.
I know. And I just want to leave one little piece that isn't addressed here that I had to work out with the town. So Nex, N-E-X, Vortex, becomes like our T-Mobile, okay? So we have to pay for a certain amount of minutes every month. They only take a credit card. So we, I spoke with Lynn, and the town has a credit card. But with the warrant process, they're never going to pay it on time, and then they would incur charges. So Scott had initially given them the American Express for Frontier Regional. So at this point, what we're going to do is we're going to leave it on that. And then I will create an invoice every month from the Frontier bill that will go on the Whately warrant so that the town of Whately will then pay back Frontier for what they're using the American Express charges for.
Can we eventually change that?
It's going to have to. And one of the ideas that Lynn had is that you guys would sign off for a year's worth of phone usage. And we used to do this in Deerfield. You would sign a warrant for one year, so she wouldn't have to wait every month. So when the bill came in, she knew she had the amount, she could pay it, and then she would just report it to us. And then we put it in our system as a non-check charge. She would send it to us and we would put it that it was paid. And I think we eventually have to do that because right now, the only reason that we can do this with Frontier is because we're still waiting for the law to decide whether or not we can have one committee person do a report. So right now, we can do it at Frontier. But eventually Frontier is going to run into the same issue where we're going to need to have the approval before the checks cut. So this is a temporary solution.
For the American Express card.
Correct.
Okay. So there's not new numbers or anything? This is all just new equipment?
Nope.
There will be the same phone numbers?
The main, the main phone numbers are going to remain the same. And there are more than most people know because, I mean, I think there's one for like the kitchen office that's always been in existence.
Or the nurse.[1728.34]
Or the nurse?
Purveyors use it. The nurse has one that pretty much parents, a lot of parents know. There's, there's two main lines. There's even, I think, going to be a remaining analog phone with a phone line should, should the whole, you know, computer system break down. I think they've thought ahead to even including one line.
We have that at, at the central office as well.
Yeah, when power goes down.
What's going to be different is that every classroom is going to have a phone with an extension, so you can dial, you know, the extension and get to your classroom teacher and leave a message. And we're going to add lines in places where we think we need them for safety. So for example, down in the basement, there's no phone, but that is where custodians do their paperwork sometimes. That's, you know, a place where, you know, in the event of an emergency where somebody might find themselves and it'd be nice to have a phone, especially in a basement where your cellphone may not work. There's probably going to be, not probably, we're going to add a phone in the, in the equipment closet in the gym. One more reason why we have to really protect that room from, you know, just adults going in there and not letting kids get in there, especially during recreation time, when the recreation department is using it. But there'll be a phone in there again in case of emergency. So those are going to be the big changes is that teachers will have more access to their personal, you know, parents can leave voicemails for teachers, they can call out from their room. And I want to point out that, because there's one more item here before I move to the principal's report, if you'll allow me to just go from one to the next, but that the intercom system is going to be through these new phones, right? So right now, we have, we have these yellow Bogen phones on the walls in most classrooms that are going to become obsolete, those are going to be removed. And right now, those are the only phones that connect to the intercom system that go, the speaker system that goes throughout the building. And so the phones are going to provide that function and they'll be connected to the speakers throughout the building, so we can do all calls and/or call a classroom through the phone. So, so the speakers will still be valuable because we can do an all-call and do our morning announcements. But if we wanted to call all classrooms, that would come through the speaker in the phone. Or if I just wanted to call Mr. Hall's classroom, for example, I could, I could intercom him through his phone. So it's really going to be much more user friendly for a lot of, for a lot of possibilities. But I also wanted to point out one other piece of this, and I didn't, I didn't copy this for you because I have some notes on this one and I couldn't find a blank one, but, but this is, this is, looks from the mirror, it's our five-year plan.
Yeah.
And if you look at it, this, this, this little yellow line, there's only four things highlighted on this page. And this one here is the air conditioning for the I T server closet. That's already been done. And we can scratch that off the list. The first one is upgrade the phone system. Once we've done that, that's off the list. And then immediately following the finish of this phone system, mid to late April, as Scott said, we're going to start working on the clock upgrade. And this also says intercom upgrade, but that's all tied together. So really by the end of the school year, everything in that first column should be complete. And then this committee can talk about what the next priority should be. And Katie, I was thinking about that because you also asked me about possibly what we might look at at the end of this year, if there's money in the budget. And I certainly can't answer that question on my own or, or indicate what it should be. Partly it's based on how much, you know, money we may have to spend. But I can say that there's a lot on this list that ranges from very big projects to, to some smaller projects. For example, on the smaller end, we have some bathroom floor drains that, that appear to have at some point in our history possibly been intentionally clogged, you know, intentionally filled. I, I suppose that the reason, I'm, I'm not a custodial engineer, but I suppose that the idea behind having those floor drains is, first of all, if there's a flood, you know, that's a place for water to go. But theoretically, if you are mopping the floor with a lot of water, the water goes in there and just like your sink or your toilet, it stays in the elbow and it keeps fumes from rising out of that, from the septic system. If you don't use a lot of water when you mop, those tubes dry up and then odors come into the building. There may have been a time, and I'm not suggesting that it was notoriously done, but there may have been a time when it was decided to just fill those with wax or concrete or something. We've had a couple of people look at them and they can't drill through it. So, but it really is not okay that they are the way they are.
Should we call our previous custodian?
To ask, to take a survey?
I'm not sure if that's the right answer, but, but that's, for example, a project that's on my list that is, probably doesn't rise to the level of a capital project. We also have a lot of trees on our campus, switching gears, that really probably need to be looked at every couple of years by a tree company. You know, the last time they were here, obviously we were replacing all the trees by the barn, but it wouldn't hurt this, you know, this coming summer to have a tree company take a look at all of our trees and decide if there are some that are dying, dangerous and need to come down, particularly where, areas where there are students, some tree work might be something. And then of course, at the end of last year, we agreed that we were going to try to maybe do a classroom every year and turn it over from carpet to tile. So there's a lot of possibilities, but I think it depends on what our financial picture looks like at the end of the year.
Do you, do you think the, the upgrades we have done in the classrooms from carpet to tile has seen more benefits than negatives or anything like that?
I think that's a great question for some teachers who've had the change to answer. I would say that generally speaking, it's easier for the custodians to clean the floors than it is to clean the carpets. I think the carpets clearly build up over time, they're harder to clean, the older they get, they're not as hygienic over time. Sound is an issue for the teachers. When you don't have carpets, the room is louder. But every teacher that had tile installed bought at least one, if not two, large area carpets and then maybe some mats for their kids and that helps a lot. The sound of the chairs on the tile floor is mitigated by putting some felt on the bottom of the legs, but these are all things that we've already experienced and are dealing with as, as they come up.
You can use tennis balls too, that's what they do with-
Yeah, tennis balls.
Do you remember Marie, the Catholic school, we had to bring in four tennis balls for the bottom, for your chair?
For chairs.
You really can't today because of latex allergies.
Oh, good God. Okay, well, it's really helpful to have an idea of what you're thinking about so that as we get towards the end of the year, then we can be taken-
How many, how many classrooms did we do last year?
We did, we did three and we did pre-K and kindergarten and the lobby between them, which was huge. And then we did second grade. So we did three classes at the end of last year.
So we still have five more, five more classrooms possible that we could do in the future?
Yeah, yeah. One, two, yeah.
We had a two, four.
Six.
What was a pre-K, K and what else?
Including, including at a school time room and the resource room, six or seven.
Yeah, I'm just, I just remember last year in kindergarten, there was a week or two where there was a lot of stomach illness and having a carpet with kids throwing up.
Yeah, yeah.
Much easier with, much easier with top, I could see with those, were to, much easier cleanup after, you know, on tile.
Yeah. Well, I guess I would, and you guys can comment, would look to you to guide us on what, what the teachers are thinking and what you think are the best next steps on that. So as we get closer to making a decision.
You mean for any project, Katie?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'll consult with staff in the building, but also with Bob Lesko and, you know, our folks too.
Right, and everybody else. So, I mean, I just feel like you should be presenting what you think is best for the school.
Yeah, sure.
Ahead of us deciding.
Yeah, absolutely.
But that's great, it's good to know, if those are out there.
Okay, should I go right on?
Yeah, why don't you finish?
All right, so the first item on that is a building update. And I wanted to let you know that we've installed in pre-K, very similar to the front door entry, we've installed a, a doorbell and a buzzer with a, with a button inside the classroom so that people can be let in. What we haven't done is installed a monitor. There is already a camera out there, but we decided it was an expense we didn't want to take on right away, that maybe we can do this summer, new budget. But it's not necessarily a safety issue because from where the buzzer is, that if you're, if you remember, that, that pre-K door is mostly glass, so it's pretty easy to see who's out there. We want to, we want to complete the project and have a monitor that'll, that'll bring us up to what we feel is very safe. But we were already noticing that at the end of the day, when there's only a handful of kids and only one staff member in the classroom, they could be way over by the smartboard, somebody rings the bell and now the teacher has to leave all those kids and go into the foyer to let them in. At least now the teacher can cross the classroom, she can maintain visual supervision of the kids, see who's at the door from inside, press the buzzer, let the parents in. But the monitor's coming too at some point.
If they extend a day, it's probably darker at pickup time during the winter.
Certain times of the year, it's already dark outside, it's lit. I mean, there's a light above the door.
But now it's, now it's like-
It's a step in the-
Even the pickup side, but it's light now, but sometimes-
Right.
Before last Saturday, but last Saturday, it was, it was probably pretty dark, get dark around five, five-thirty.
And quite frankly, with the tinted windows, when it gets dark out, the opposite effect starts to happen. You can see in better and it's harder to see out. And that's not great for safety if the teacher can't really see who's out there.
Right, they can't see out.
Right. But that's where the monitor comes in and, and we, you know, certainly that hasn't fallen off the radar entirely. We just started the project by doing this one part. And the monitor was more expensive than what we've done to add the monitor piece, so we're just going to hold off on that and get it done next.
Okay. Well, that's a great idea though, the doorbell.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was important to have that same safety precaution down there that we do in the front of the-
Is there a doorbell here in the front?
Yeah, yeah, the, the one-
When you push, oh, and there's the bell, right.
Yeah, call, doorbell, yeah. So it's the intercom system essentially. It rings in the office and then we can say, who's there? And come on in if we want to let them in.
I've just been here on weekends and if people can't get locked out, they have no way to contact people.
Oh, that only goes into the office.
So it only goes into the office, the doorbell?
That's right, it doesn't ring through the hall.
It doesn't ring like in the hallways, okay.
Okay, so also there were attachments to my principal's report and one is a form that should look familiar, it's the one we've been using now for a couple of years in terms of anticipated school choice openings. I promised you I'd keep you up to date. So here is the update right now. You can look at the chart, but it might be easier to just go down to the very bottom and consider-
Oh, you've got 13.
Pardon?
You've got 13 new kids?
Applications, yeah, yeah, 13 applications so far.
Yeah.
So yep, just to, just to give you sort of the, the coming and going and really in some detail, we currently have 37 school choice students. We lost five of them this year. One family moved to Brockton. A brother and sister moved out when one, one of the students went to a program and, and the other student followed. And then we had one more family that, that moved simply to, out of state actually. One, one family moved, what did I say before? I meant Mar-a-Lago.
Brockton.
Yeah, one family moved to the eastern part of the state, then one family moved out of state. So that lowered our numbers. And then if you add to that the, the departing school choice students in sixth grade, we're looking at going down to 31 students before the year is over. And 13 more will bring us up to 44. And the intention is to continue to advertise. The next advertisement will go out before this month is over. We've advertised our openings in the Gazette and the Recorder. We will again, the next advertisement will include our lottery date, which this year, I haven't picked the exact date yet, but it'll probably be during the April vacation week. We'll pick a date and send out acceptance forms. If we need to do a lottery in any grade, we'll do it that week. And that's an if, we only do a lottery if we have more applications for a class than we do openings. But we want to get the word out soon because we do have some parents who've applied who want to know, you know. It's not to say that they won't come here anyway, but some parents have said to us, you know, I'd like to know when we're going to be approved, otherwise I may want to put out some other feelers.
And the converts could be true because if we have people who are applying that were, maybe they're sick in their third choice, if we force them to make the decision earlier, we'll still have time to go back out and fill them again.
Right, right. So it works both ways. And also, you know, people, people do-
That's a great idea.
Do market on our behalf. We have parents that are very happy here and they go out and they tell other parents, yes, you should absolutely accept that. So, so that's where we stand right now. And, and we'll do the, we'll do the lottery a little earlier this year than we have in the past because I think some schools do it earlier than we have in the past and we need to bring that date up a little bit. And then we'll see where we stand.
So do we get a good reply to the kindergarten? The idea that people that were in the preschool could choice into the-
Yep.
That where we told them that we were going to give them priority?
Yep, yep.
Well, we can't give them priority.
Patty corrected that, but, but those families want to come here and, and within, you know-
Okay.
Why can't we hear them?
Again, it's against the law.
Okay, we don't want to do that.
No.
Out of the six that are anticipating coming into kindergarten, how many of those are in our preschool right now?
I think we have more than six. Those, those are, those are choice applications, probably, I would say, no, I see what you're asking me now, yeah. So 10, the 10, the column, the first column that shows 10, those are, those are all town residents who've enrolled. And, and there's an 11th, that's what the asterisk is, that is not sure if they're going to come to Waitley or not. And then of the six, I'm going to say four, Bob. I could be wrong, but I think that there's four from preschool that we've-
So we got at least a, a couple other ones that have gave applications anyway, so, which is nice.
All right, so I'll move on to the last few items here unless there's any questions about school choice, but I'll keep that on the agenda for next month too.
I mean, the, the question that we always have, I guess, with, with classroom sizes and stuff, and I see a couple of them would put us over that 20 mark, that we try to, is, you know, discretion could be, you know, like there's one person that has an application for sixth grade, we're going to have 20, do we make the decision to do 21?
I would recommend absolutely yes, especially if it's one of the upper grades. I do have a family that wants to bring a kindergartner and, and another grade-
Yep.
That would push that grade up to 21 also.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I like to see them lower in the, in the early grades, but, you know, if you have 21 in some, you know, second grade is the one we're looking at here.
Yeah.
If you have 21 in second grade next year-
And 21 in sixth grade, I mean it's-
You know, I, I mean, it could climb, I mean, there's a possibility that by the time that classroom gets to sixth grade, it could be 23 or 24. That's still not out of the universe of reasonable classroom sizes. And it would only climb if we either continue to accept choice or if we had residents moving in.
People move in to town.
And just because we push it to 21 this year, doesn't mean we have to push it to 22 next year with choice. It could go up with residents, but-
And one of the things-
So I think this is a good year to maybe reconsider our 20, our capital 20.
I think the other thing that, you know, from the Frontier perspective, most of our school choice kids come up through the, the acceptance in the Union 38 school. We don't get a lot of newbies coming in in seventh grade, they're coming up. So we want to make, you know, we want to make sure that, that feed is still coming because, I don't know if you were there, if you guys had stayed for the presentation, but Frontier's getting to the point where our charter and choice is costing more money than what we're bringing in. And for every one child that goes out, Darius has to bring in four school choice. So we don't want to be in that position where we have to start budgeting choice and charter tuition out.
Right. Right, yeah, I think it's a good idea to look at the target numbers as we get to final-
And I'm not sure how many people watched 60 Minutes last night, who they had on first on 60 Minutes last night, but it was pretty disgusting as far as I'm concerned.
I saw snippets, it was Leslie Stahl and-
It was, it's all about charter schools and our person, our person who's heading our country for education is pushing for more charter and less for us people. And it's, it's really, oh my God, it was-
Her disposition though just doesn't cease to amaze me because Leslie is pounding her.
Oh yeah, she's pounding her.
I'm questioned about her home state of Michigan and how the public schools have not improved and yet you continue to take more money, how do you think they're, and she just sits there and smiles. It's like-
With a big smile on her face, she said, no, I haven't delivered any visiting schools.
I, I haven't visited any schools.
Underperforming.
Typically, I don't watch 60 Minutes, my wife says, you had to put on channel three, I put it on. As soon as I saw who it was, I says, okay, and Leslie Stahl's just hammering her and she kept that same little smirk and, yeah, we got to give more to charter schools and less to the public sector.
Well, there's a good study also in the rural school districts that, I read about it in the newspaper or somewhere, that is really talking about the struggles that the rural districts are having. And I think we're not quite rural, but we're close enough that we can see what some of those struggles are and they're making some good recommendations.
I am, we, several superintendents and myself, we wrote a letter to Boston about a four charter school, a Four Rivers charter, because they really, they don't really offer anything different than what we offer in our district, and yet we're paying for students to go there. So this was at the Frontier deliberative session, the budget hearing rather, and they said, well, you know, what about the Chinese immersion? We don't have a lot of students going there, but I said, I'll get the letter, the template, and send it out to, so sent it out to everyone on the Frontier Committee and to the Deerfield Selectmen. And they put it on their agenda for their upcoming meeting to send out to.
Send something.
Because they refused, they did not honor their request for 400 more seats last year, but they keep coming back.
They keep asking for it.
And they'll keep coming back. And so the letter needs to go out by the 16th of March, so I have them going out and their letters.
I mean, the town of Amherst is just devastated.
Getting hammered, yeah.
Katie, there is something I announced at the other, help me with the date, it might be, it's a Greenfield community, March 24th. It's the sustainability, the continued sustainability of rural school districts. It's from like 8:30 to noon.
There was something tonight.
Yes, that you might want to attend and if you want, we can get you the information.
What's that date, do you remember what that date was?
It's a Saturday.
Was it Saturday?
It's a Saturday morning at GCC.
And yes, I think Mike Von Akkati had a meeting tonight. He always has meetings when I have meetings.
Well, we have, how many nights do you have?
Well, that's it, and then, or else it'll be a Wednesday morning when I always have my meetings on Wednesdays.
With your principal, but. Okay, we got off on a tangent here with school choice, but maybe if you want to finish.
The last two items very quickly, the first two a little bit more involved. So I just wanted to make you aware again, like we do every year, that Terry Anderson organizes a book study group for us on a yearly basis. She's been doing it for years and I think if Terry's been here for 10 years, she's probably been doing this for seven or eight at least, right?
Yeah.
So she peruses a lot of good books, picks one, shares two or three with staff to see which one they might like to read. And this year, we're reading a book called Embarrassment, The Emotional Underlife of Learning by Thomas Newkirk, and there are 16 staff participating, that might be one of the biggest we've had too. And everybody reads a book on their own and then they meet outside of school one day or twice, I think, once in the middle of the book and once at the end of the book, at probably Bridge Side or something like that. And it's a really, really fun and exciting, and I just want to shout out to Terry and really thank her for doing it, for all the people who participate in it. It takes, you know, it's a way of doing some professional learning together that makes it a lot of fun for folks. So I just wanted you to be aware.
Where do you get this book? Amazon or?
We buy them, yeah, it depends, we just look for the best deal when it's time to buy.
That's a nice collaborative PD thing that you guys do together.
Yeah, and it's by choice, I mean, people who don't want to do it don't have to do it, but this year, a lot of people jumped in. I think the topic of the book really engaged some folks. Number four, early release activities. Again, just very straightforward, I just wanted you to have a copy of what's left for the year so you can see what's coming down the road for Friday early releases for the rest of this year anyway. And then lastly, you know, safety is always at the forefront and I just wanted to let you know that this Friday, State Trooper Carmichael, who is one of the lead guys in our district, who's done such a great job with us and for all of our schools, not to the exclusion of any of the other local or county police or other state troopers that work with us, but Jim Carmichael's been really very, very helpful and he's coming back to our staff meeting this Friday morning. And I've given him the whole agenda so that we can talk about updates based on some of the craziness that's happened more recently. He wanted to come in and meet with staff, so we have him coming Friday and we'll continue that conversation. That's all I've got.
So I have a question about the early release. I don't know if you guys ever look at the calendar of early release, but I was wondering if you would consider maybe not having any early, or minimizing early release in January and February just because of the snow.
We're having a meeting on Wednesday morning to discuss early release and any possible modifications or changes or improvements based on input. That's a very valid point and that's a good point. Is it because kids are going home early and they're better off?
No, because we've had so many snow days and two-hour delays and. Having these short days, but not the long days, right?
It's a kind of a learning.
Yeah. So last year, right, if it was an early release, we'd cancel it if it was a delay.
Yeah, that's very confusing. But then parents got very confused. So this year, I said, early release days are early release days and, so I see what you mean. Yeah, and who would have thought here we are in March?
Right, March seems to have a lot also, but I think it's a good thing to consider.
Right, or mid-December to mid-March, something where.
They're minimized during the snow day.
Well, I do, I agree, I agree, I think especially, we have MCAS, they never change a day on MCAS, and yet, whether we have school or not, we've already lost six days of school this year. Yeah, so like push them on the fringe.
Early and late.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works with what you guys schedule.
And then we use quite a few for a parent-teacher conference. So there's a, you know, it's an ongoing, it's an evolution of growth and learning from experience. So we will take that under consideration though. Like I said, we are meeting Wednesday morning and there will be school Wednesday morning, we will be meeting. But I, that's a great request and I'll certainly bring that up with the peers.
Great, thank you, Pete, for that update. Lynn, do you want to?
I don't have any update, I don't know.
I don't have any. Well, I did, I was trying to talk about the budget, but we've already enjoyed that.
So collaborative ideas.
How was, Pete, how was the profit on the pancake revenue, was it a good turnout or?
You know, I don't know. I'm not sure I've heard any of the numbers.
Yeah, we're still waiting to reimburse for some of the expenses, so.
Okay. Do you know how many meals we made or sold?
I don't know many meals, no, but it was steady.
Okay, good.
Usually, sometimes in the past, for me, in my experience, the first hour is kind of slow, but I was here then and it was steady.
I heard you weren't being helpful though, you were not going to record.
Yeah.
That's all right, we will hold that against you.
Oh, thank God Indy was here because he knew, I wouldn't know where to find anything to clean it up.
Only you worry.
Sorry, missed it. Okay, so I think that's all we have for today's meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Make a motion adjourn at 7:24.